We'll go ahead and reconvene in a special meeting of the Folsom City Council. I believe we have no action report, Mr. City Attorney.
Justice.
Okay, with that, we'll adjourn the regular, excuse me, the special meeting of the Folsom City Council and call to order the regular meeting of the Folsom City Council for Tuesday, January 9, 2018, and the clerk, please call the roll.
Council members Gaylord.
Here.
Howell.
Here.
Moran.
Here.
Sheldon.
Here.
And Miklos.
Here, and if you'd all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So ladies and gentlemen, Happy New Year and thank you for coming out this evening. We'll kind of do a little something different, a little surprise here, so I'd like to call up Officer Scott Bailey to the center podium there for a minute, please. Scott is, did his last meeting with us, has been the only officer sitting down here, now replaced by Officer Jensen, as our regular PD enforcement guru, if you will, in taking care of us since the day we started that. Scott's also been with the city of Folsom for, as I understand, since 1982, and so we'd like to say thank you in behalf of the city of Folsom, this Folsom City Council. I'd also like Chief Renault, if he'd like to step and say a few words, because we're not letting Scott out of this building until he's properly recognized.
Thank you very much.
And she has a gun, so you're gonna have to pay attention, Scott.
You don't.
I think he does, too.
Probably.
Thank you very much for recognizing Officer Bailey tonight, for all of the efforts that he has done, all of his time and commitment that he's given to the city of Folsom. Being a police officer can be a difficult job, you know, in its own, and then to find people that do it on a volunteer basis, because they care for their community, because they want to give back to their community in a way that at times could put them in harm's way, it's really a great honor, very selfless, and something that I know he's proud of, and we are very proud of him and his service to our fine city. Along with guarding our council meetings and being here to protect all of us and government while it functions, if you don't know, his heart is really for youth in this city.
Just gonna mention the scouting.
Yes, his son is one of our explorers, and Scott has represented us at many, many pool court ceremonies in this city. He is probably very well recognized by a lot of our Eagle Scouts, the Boy Scouts, and a lot of our youth in the surrounding city. Scott, it's been a pleasure for me to work with you for the past seven years. Thank you for all that you've done. Thank you for spending every other Tuesday with me here at council. You will be greatly missed. Thank you.
Yeah.
I just want to say thank you to everybody. Thank you to council, thank you to city staff, thank you to the mayor, thank you to the Folsom PD staff, especially the chief. Just wanted to say that my first night on patrol was 1982, New Year's Eve, and if I recall correctly, I think my first night got paid a correct, and other than that, not a lot happened, but we had this god-awful brown uniform, it was cappy, frigid mesh pants, it had ugly brown stripes on it, a six-point western-style star, patrol cars were hideous, and they had the old western-style logo written on it, but it worked. The department was located in the basement of the old city hall, wherever it rained, locker room was flooded, so you had to find some other place to get dressed. We had one dispatcher on, and when they had to go to the bathroom, you had to call somebody who put patrol to manifolds and the radios. One night, I recall, the trash was called in the back door and the dispatcher didn't like that much. So lots of fun things, but from there, we've advanced an awful lot. It's been fun to watch the department improve dramatically. I'm proud to say that we have a top-tier department now here in the city, that I think everybody in this room should be very proud of. So that, thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor, I'm just thankful that the chief didn't say, "It's hard to find cops as good as Scott and ones that'll be willing to sit through council meetings twice a month."
So with that, actually, good segue, Mr. Manager. So Cindy, would you like to introduce the new officer this evening, formerly?
Yes, I would like to take this opportunity to introduce to you Officer Joseph Smith. Joseph has been with our department for about two years now. He was a lateral hire in. We're very pleased to have him, and he has been given excellent instruction on how to perform his duties here this evening. Next Tuesday, he will look much different, and I'm not sure who he will look like next, or at our next council meeting, two Tuesdays from now, because I'm taking this opportunity to have a different officer at every council meeting so that I can expose the police department to the functioning of government here in the city. So everyone will be very well briefed on what their job is and what they're here to do, but you will see a different face every Tuesday, which allows me to, as I said, expose the department to the functioning of government here in the city of Folsom, so it's really a great opportunity.
It's a great opportunity, it's a great honor, and it's also an opportunity to introduce our officers to the community that generally don't actually see them a lot. We get to see them, obviously, with the things we do with them, but it's a nice opportunity. So welcome, and I hope we make your night enjoyable this evening and uneventful.
We'll try, but does that mean, Cindy, that you're gonna be whoever has to come to any given council meeting is whoever got in trouble last?
No, not at all. Trust me, it's a good assignment.
Appreciate it, thank you, Chief. Okay, with that, we'll move on to agenda update. Any updates to the agenda?
You do have one update tonight, item 9B, that's Resolution 10,059 regarding the NEXA study fee. There are updates to that. The updates have been provided to the council members and copies are available at the back table.
Okay, and then call the next item, please.
Next item is your first scheduled presentation tonight. This is item 5A, a resolution of commendation honoring the Folsom Lake Symphony for receiving the 2017 Folsom Arts Achievement Award.
And I've asked council member Howell to do the honors for this, and she's very active with these folks, and we have also a personal connection with a couple of them, too, so I wanted Carrie to do the honors. So Carrie?
Anson Wong, Bruce Woodbury, and Brian Wallace. Okay, this is a resolution of commendation honoring Folsom Lake Symphony for receiving the 2017 Folsom Arts Achievement Award, whereas this Arts Achievement Award is being presented to recognize and honor the Folsom Lake Symphony, and whereas since 2004, Folsom Lake Symphony has excited audience with its diversity of concert programming, from classical music, ballet, operatic arias, to popular movie scores and traditional holiday favorites, and whereas the symphony reaches an audience of over 7,000 community members each season over its ten concert offering, and whereas the symphony fulfills its mission to introduce community youth to live music by providing a low-cost, family-oriented concert every March, the symphony's conductor gives music instruction at the podium during this concert, and afterwards, the Harris Center lobby becomes packed with youngsters waiting to patiently try out instruments in the petting zoo that follows each family concert, and whereas beginning in 2017, musicians from the symphony began a school visit program, giving mini concerts and question-and-answer time to a smaller group of elementary-grade students. Symphony also provides free, family-oriented outdoor pops concerts to broaden its reach into the community, and whereas the Folsom Lake Symphony is truly a community orchestra comprised of 65 volunteer musicians, they play for their personal enjoyment and strongly believe in the symphony's mission to present high-quality symponic performances for the pleasure and cultural enrichment of the residents of the Folsom Lake region. Whereas this year, they are being recognized for their outstanding achievement for their new youth engagement programs in the schools, which include family concerts, student night at the symphony, music in the schools, student performer programs, and providing music experiences to underserved communities. Now therefore, I, Carrie Howell, on behalf of Steve Miklos, Mayor of the city of Folsom, and the Folsom City Council, Folsom Arts and Cultural Commission, and the Folsom Lake Community, do hereby extend commendations in the highest regard to the Folsom Lake Symphony for receiving the 2017 Folsom Arts Achievement Award. The Folsom Lake Symphony is a truly treasure in Folsom, passed and adopted this ninth day, January 2018. And I'm just gonna add to that, I was, I was a little bit disappointed, I've known Bruce for a long, long time, and I'm having a hard time imagining Folsom Lake Symphony without you being there. So congratulations, New York Tarment.
Thank you.
And we must really like you guys, because we don't normally frame these anymore, so...
This is beautiful. Thank you. Okay, thank you very much.
No parting spears from roots?
If I could, certainly. Okay, if I could, I'd like to first thank everybody. It's been 15 years, many people have known me throughout the Chamber of Commerce as Mr. Symphony. I'd like to be known for other things, like my business and stuff, but anyway.
Tax season's coming up, Bruce.
If anybody's mentioning anything, but again, I'd like to thank you all, there's many people here that have been to our performances, we've had some guest conductors, several guest conductors with us over the years, and we thank them. Police chief has been there, even before she started the position, or at least before she moved here, she was a guest conductor. I thank the volunteers and the people of this community that listened to the vision that I had and jumped on board and believed in it and pushed forward, and we have a great program today. I am stepping down from my, retiring, so I can go back to my real-day job, and, because it is a volunteer position, the entire, it's all a volunteer position, so Anson Wong is taking over, and I am extremely pleased with his capabilities. He's been the hidden behind-the-scenes man the last five, eight years, and done a great job, so he finally relented and said, "I can, I'll do it," so I can step down. We also have some other volunteers that have been, from the original days, volunteers, Corinne and Anthony. And of course, their spouses, for putting up with everything, but thank you again. It has, as I've said before, the joke goes, "I started this when I was 29, 15 years later, I'm now 57." Good, you caught it, some people don't catch that. Anyway, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Go ahead. Can, Anson would like to say something if he could?
Yeah, first off, I want to thank Bruce for doing such a great job over the last 14 years, he'll be really missed. I really look forward to continuing his tradition of providing great music to the Folsom Lake region. I'd like to thank the Folsom Arts and Cultural Commission for this award and to the Folsom City Council. I look forward to continuing the journey and having a great time with the community. Thank you so much.
Just real quick, I've got to tell you, Anson is a musician, a founding musician. He is in first violin section, so he's not only playing, but he's also taking over the administrative side of it, so, very talented people.
And I just want to remind everybody, if you've never, anybody that's in the audience or anybody that's watching this either online or on Channel 14, if you've never been to a production, I strongly, strongly encourage you to go. It's an amazing group of musicians, the talent, the local talent is amazing, and then on top of that, they bring in musicians from outside. I know that my former neighbor behind me used to play with you guys fairly frequently, Tony K.
Yes, yes, and the most, one of the most frequent comments I've had, if I had a dollar for every time I heard somebody pull me aside and say, "Bruce, I'm embarrassed by what I expected to hear, and I came for the first time, you guys are amazing. I'm now a season ticket holder." I've, one guy, he came, he was from London, London, England, he said, "I grew up in London, been to all the nice concerts and everything," that's what he said, he said, "I'm embarrassed to tell you, I didn't expect to hear much, but once I got here, you guys are amazing, this is a treasure."
Absolutely.
And the last thing I wanted, this is the last thing I wanted to say, the purpose for my creating the symphony was literally nothing more than, I love this community, I have my young family here, I wanted to give a gift to the community, a contribution, nothing more than like a Eagle Scout project, only I was a little bit too old for that. So, but it's something like I'd done before, so that was the intent and purpose. I would love it if the city of Folsom could take it around in its wings and when you talk about the city, there's all the wonderful events that are occurring, all the events, all the great institutions, but remember the symphony as often as you can, include it, and let it be part of the overall image of who we are. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Very good, thank you.
Okay, clerk, please call the next item.
Your next item is scheduled presentation 5B. This is an infrastructure update for a south of Highway 50.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members and staff. I'm Steve Kron, I'm the city engineer, and I've been working closely with the landowners in the Folsom Plan area over the last few years, as, through the course of construction that occurred, that started last April 2017, and has been ongoing for the last nine months. I'd like to thank Jim Ray with McCann-Somps and his team for putting together the PowerPoint presentation you're gonna see this evening, and also I'd like to thank our owner's rep who's been overseeing the construction from the beginning, Kelly Butcher, he's our eyes and ears in the field for staff overseeing the construction that had started last April, as I mentioned. The purpose of tonight's presentation is just to give a brief overview of what we've done, have accomplished out there, and so you can see, it's really a series of photographs of the work that's happened out there, and kind of give you a current update of where we are. Also included in the presentation is an overview, will be a brief overview of where we expect to see model home construction begin in this year, in 2018, early on, all the way throughout the year, and we'll also see what we expect to see for grading and construction to occur over 2018, which, based on what we've seen submitted and in discussions with the landowners, we expect it to be a lot more construction activity than we even saw out there this past year. So with that, I'll go ahead and get started with the presentation. This is a overview of the approved tentative subdivision maps in the plan area that have already been approved. We've got Mangini Ranch Phase 1, Broadstone Estates is up there, the enclave is there at Alder Creek Parkway and East Bidwell, as well as Folsom Heights, Russell Ranch, and White Rock Springs Ranch. This is the overall picture of what has been under construction since last year, at the beginning of April. This is the general idea of what we're calling the first phase of the infrastructure. The infrastructure is outlined here, and we'll be going through a series of photographs, and I'll describe a little bit in the photographs of what you're gonna see, but most of it is depicted on this exhibit here that you'll be seeing in the next series of photographs. This is looking south from Placerville Road to the undercrossing. The old bike trail that's there on the left is where the water lines there, they're serving the first phase of the infrastructure. This take went several, a few months ago, but the railroad tracks are there, and also the water lines will go onto the freeway. This next photo is from the, from the south looking north, where those water lines will go into is that building there in the center, that's the foundation for the water booster pump stations, Zone 4 and 5. That's a more recent photograph of the sound while going around facility, that's currently under construction. This is an idea, we're kind of gonna go from east to west with the infrastructure. This is an overall shot of where the Zone 5 water tank and the Zone 5 and 6 booster pump station, and that last photograph, 4 or 5 booster pump station, that will pump water up to the tank that's in this next photo. That is the Zone 5 water tank, that's at the top of the hill, and you can see the cell site close to it. That is now, the roof has been put on and it's complete, it will be painted at some point, it won't be red, but that is done now, and they're moving forward. Next to that site is the 5, 6 booster pump station, so the 4 or 5 booster pump station at Placerville Road in the previous photographs will pump water up to this tank, and the Zone 5 tank, the 5 or 6 booster pump station will pump it in to serve that first phase of Russell Ranch, and we'll get to more of that later.
Steve, what's that tank capacity?
Pardon me?
Tank capacity.
2.5 million gallons.
Thank you.
This is looking from Placerville Road up the hill, and you can see, I'll point out the cell site to give you a general idea of what we're looking at, because you can't see the tank itself from this, from Placerville Road, or really from Folsom, but it's up there next to that cell site in the background, but this is the road that's heading up, this is Alder Creek Parkway, as it heads east from Placerville Road, and that's, that's gonna work through the, work through the year, but it probably won't be paved and completed until early spring. This is the view looking west from that same location, it's up near the cell site, going down the site. You can see in the background there Alder Creek Parkway that goes over to East Bidwell Street, and the freeway, of course, on the right. This is an aerial view of what is, from Alder Creek Parkway that was recently constructed, well, it was constructed over the summer, it's been open for several months, but that, this will extend on up, Alder Creek will extend up the hill, and again, you can see in the background the cell site, so it gives you a general idea of where that's located. Here, this kind of looks like a painting, but it's actually a Easter leaf look from Alder Creek Parkway from East Bidwell Street, and you can see, again, way back in the back, the cell site, so it gives you an idea of where you're located. This is a shot up near the cell site, there'll be an access road that will come from Alder Creek Parkway when it's completed, and it will also, it'll, so it'll be a paved road into the cell site itself. This is a view from up near the cell site, again, this is where the Russell Ranch Recreation Center will be constructed. We're expecting to see improvement plans on that this year, this summer, maybe in the late summer, so you may see some activity at that location. This is jumping back down to East Bidwell Street for the Mangini Ranch project. This is one of our detention basins, we have four of them under construction now, and we should be building about four more, three or four more this year, in 2018. This is Grand Prairie Road where it loops back around, it's hard to give a visual, but it loops around this mountain to the left here in that photograph, and that's where Phase 1 of Russell Ranch will be constructed this year. We've approved the plans for the grading of that, so we expect that to start as soon as the weather clears, and that will be the, where the first subdivision improvements will be constructed. So the Grand Prairie Road loop around to Alder Creek Parkway will be, will surround the grading that's gonna be done this year for Russell Ranch Phase 1. This is just a look from that location, most of that infrastructure's already been put in the ground. If you've been down Placerville Road, you may have noticed the smud substation, it's moving forward quite rapidly, they submitted, they set poles this past week, and now they're putting in wires this past week as well, so that should be powered up, we're expecting the power to be at the substation sometime in February of next month. So there's a view of that. Again, here's a view, I failed to mention earlier, a view did not show the extension of East Bidwell south from Alder Creek Parkway. It's now completed, and it was opened up shortly before Christmas, back to, through traffic. Here is Mangini Ranch, Mangini Parkway, as it approaches East Bidwell Street, south of Alder Creek Parkway, that's already paved, which is where we expect to see our first residential construction, our home, home construction. We've already approved the design review approval for Taylor Morrison's homes in that look in Mangini Ranch, and we just recently, this past week, got an application for their model home master plans for their homes from CalAtlantic. So this is where we anticipate the initial home construction to begin, and I'll have some better photographs of that a little bit later. East Bidwell Street is complete, is open now, this is the frontage along Mangini Ranch, there's some shots there from White Rock and then from Mangini intersection, that's open for traffic, as I mentioned. This is the other end of Mangini Parkway, and it's currently connected to Placerville Road on the, on the east side of Mangini Ranch. That one-lane road is an EVA in the interim, and that will eventually connect when site development occurs on either side. But those improvements are, it's all paved, and we expect that to be completed sometimes in early spring. Now we're jumping over back to the Outfall Sewer, that's the, kind of an aerial view, you can see kind of what we've discussed so far, on the, on the right, coming down the hill. What you see across there is the Gravity Sewer Main. Gravity Sewer Main carries sewer, sewage from the eastern end of the property all the way to, close to the western end, to a sewer lift station that's currently under construction. I've got some photographs of that, too, so you'll be able to see that here shortly.
That's gonna ultimately dump into FE3?
Yes, it'll pump, there's a force main that comes from the lift station, goes across the freeway, and will connect through development on the north side to the existing FE3 lift station that's owned by Regional Sand, managed by, owned and managed by Regional Sand. Here's a couple other views of it. This, this, there is a paved road, and the important thing on here is there's a paved road that serves the entire alignment for the sewer, so we'll be able to maintain it, you know, as it is in service, before any development really occurs on either side of it in the future. So there's a good shot of it, of it paved. It doesn't go all the way through, it connects from, if you can get to the lift station from Placerville, from, from East Bidwell, and also from Prairie City Road, but you can't get across, and the reason you can is that we don't have a road across this location, but this, this is a temporary, this is a bridge that carries this, that same sewer pipe, sewer main across Alder Creek, and that's nearing completion as well. And here's an overview of what I mentioned earlier, is the lift station. There's a couple other better shots here, that's a little over close, the wall's in place, the structure's there, like I said, the force main is currently under construction. The force main is bored and jacked, is gonna be bored and jacked, it's currently happening right now under Highway 50, and I've got a, it's hard to tell, I have a better photograph here, but there, the bore pit is there, and I think as of today, they were about 70 feet short of getting through underneath the freeway with that casing. They started it about a month ago, it's been slow-going, but looks like it's gonna be successful, and that'll carry the force mains across Highway 50 to get, eventually get to the lift station on Iron Point Road. There's a shot of the pit, and there's the casing that's going across the freeway. There's the bridge, that bridge can't be driven across by our maintenance staff, who will be maintaining the force main, it can't support that load. The other bridge that was, that carried the Gravity Sewer Main, we can't drive across. So, well, we'll move into a little bit here briefly, this is an overview of the Mangini Ranch development, you kind of see the two, four villages there, Villages 1, 2, 8, and 9, that are taking shape along Mangini Parkway, east of, East Bidwell Street, and this is where we expect to see our first home construction. Here's a couple shots of it there, a little more, a lot of that work's currently underway, getting close to being completed. There's just another shot. So with that, with this, this is the, I've got a series of slides here to kind of show the general location of where we expect to see model homes being constructed, so far is what we know. We know Taylor Morrison and CalAtlantic will be building Homes and Villages 1, 2, 8, and 9 in Mangini Ranch, and this is their location where we expect to see those model homes. And we anticipate that they'll most likely be pulling permits for those model homes as early as the next month, so. There's a, there's a more close-up view of the model homes that we anticipate to see down there. Let's see what happened there. This is Russell Ranch, as I mentioned before, Alder Creek Parkway and Eastern Valley Park, and Grand Prairie Roads circle what we're calling Phase 1 from Russell Ranch, it was in the earlier slide. These are the villages that will be constructed, we're anticipating this to start in spring of this year, and these are the model home locations, we're anticipating them to be constructed. We're anticipating at this point that those, those model homes will be ready to pull permits, probably in the late summer of 2018, so it's a few months from now. We have another small project that I failed to mention earlier, this is the enclave, this was also approved, this is 111-unit subdivision, like an ICOR type of subdivision, that is ready for plan approval, and we should see grading occur on this site probably as early, early spring of 2018. And there's a little close-up view of where we expect the model homes to be, be there as well. So that, that kind of summarizes where we are now. I know, I mentioned earlier that we expect this year's construction season to be even more active than last year's. more active than last year's, um, with, with work going on on several different fronts, several grading and construction, one of which is this project. This is White Rock Springs Ranch. Uh, the tentative map is approved, I think, last year, and, uh, we've had plans come in for mass grading this entire site, and we're expecting Phase One. The several, I think three villages, uh, comprise Phase One, which is noted here, and those, those villages, improvement plans will be coming in probably in the next couple of weeks for review and approval. Um, this is Folsom Heights. It was approved last summer. Um, this is what we expect. We don't really know at this point, but this is our anticipated, um, Phase One for Folsom Heights. Um, if you all recall, this was, was, um, approved last summer, and, um, this is what we expect to see as Phase One. We haven't actually seen any plans come in at this point, but we expect them to see it sometime this year. Lastly, I'd just like to wrap up. There's a couple of projects, entitlements that will be, or that are in the process now. Uh, this, your council will see this project, Mangini Ranch Phase Two. I believe it's on February 13th. It'll be presented to you. I think it goes to planning commission next week. Uh, if it moves forward, it'll come forward, um, on the 13th for your review and approval. And so that's the next, uh, anticipated tentative subdivision map being approved. They have also indicated to us, the developer and the landowner, that they may move forward, um, with construction on, uh, two or three of these villages this year. Um, there's an overall view of what you'll see, um, and on the 13th of the, uh, set master plan. The other project that's currently in entitlement review is, uh, Russell Ranch Phase Two. Um, that's the general location of where that is. Um, we may see, um, activity on this as well this year. So, um, this is the last, I, last couple of slides. This is a, a commercial development. Um, we, this is the early stages. This is what, we, we're not sure exactly when this is going to get started, but we expect the first commercial, um, activity to happen probably in 2019, and that would be at the intersection of East Bidwell and, um, Alder Creek Parkway. So with that, I can open it up for questions?
Any questions to Steve?
Yeah. What, what's the approximate number of homes, uh, they're construction? What would you say?
Um, well, we-
On the first phase?
On the first phase with, uh, we have four villages in Mangini Ranch, and I believe that number is, uh, I want to say 386 lots. So, um, yeah, we would expect those to be absorbed and permits to be issued, issued for those four villages, for a total of 386 lots, probably, uh, over the next three years.
Three years?
Yeah.
And I'm glad you clarified it because some of the, some of the presentation assumes that all this stuff is being built now.
Right.
So as we go through the villages-
Mm-hmm.
-it'd be helpful if you kind of give us a timing of when we'll see something vertical and how long it's going to take before one of those-
Yeah.
-properties actually gets developed.
We, we, uh, as far as Mangini Ranch is concerned, they're, they're the most far, they're the farthest along, and that's where we expect to see the first, first round of, um, building permits issued, model homes and then production home permits. Model homes will probably be issued, um, in, by March of this year, so in the next two months, we expect model homes to go vertical. They're finishing up all of the improvements that we've lit, that was identified here, and they should be ready for acceptance probably in, in early April of this year, so in the next three months. At that point, they'd be ready to move forward with, um, production homes. So, you know, assuming that they go forward with production homes, which would be shortly after the models, um, we could have people living out there in the planned area this summer. And that's where we'll see mo, the, the, most of the majority, if not all the, um, home construction for the first half of 2018. Later on in the year, as I mentioned, um, we've, we've got plans ready to go for Russell Ranch, that entire area around, uh, within Phase One, and we would expect to issue model home permits in that development probably later in the summer of this year. And then that, that would start that process there. So as, as each, uh, this time next year, we could have, we could see model home being issued on all the other developments that I mentioned, depending on the, uh, pace of construction this year. So in early 2019, we might have two or three or four home builders, you know, pulling permits for not only models, but for production homes at the same time.
And generally speaking, Steve, on average, how many permits do they pull per phase or, or per time? In other words, once the models are done, what's, what's the milestone before they actually ask for permits? And generally, how many do they, do they do at a time?
Well, they usually do them in, in, uh, in bunches. You know, they'll get the model homes going there. You start getting activity, people coming through there and looking. So they usually come in and pull permits. You know, the master plans, once they're approved, it's just a matter of them coming in to pay the fees to, because then once the master plan's approved, they just show, hey, we're going to put this master plan on this lot for production and then sell it and get it into escrow. Uh, but we, we would probably see groups, we've seen in the past groups of, you know, 10 to 15 permits at a time being constructed, um, throughout the course. So like I said, maybe for a hundred lot subdivision, those, those, those hundred permits may absorb over two years or even a three-year period, depending on sales.
Okay. And, and that's where I'm trying to key on again, so people get a realistic idea of what the pace is, because this is a 25 to 30-year plan. So I just want to make sure that we inform them on a regular basis what the pace actually is in reality. And I know it's very difficult because we're at the very-
Yes.
-urgent stages, but, so as we do these, that's, that's, that's the kind of questions that we're going to want to have.
Right. Well, what we do have, what we do have a good feel for is, is Mangini Ranch. Mangini Ranch is very close to, you know, they're starting concrete, next phase will be paving. You'll, you'll actually see subdivisions out there, and once those models go in and, and people will actually be able to gain active, gain access to them, you know, uh, we would expect the sales to increase. So I would think shortly thereafter, the models are open, that they're going to be pursuing production home permit. But that's where you're going to see home construction activity for at least the first half of, of 2018, probably in getting, close to the second half, before some of these other developments get paved and they're ready for, uh, to pull permits there as well.
Bernie, you have some more?
No, thanks.
Yeah, thanks, thanks, Steve. At what point are we going to see, uh, traffic mitigation and traffic infrastructure improvements for all the developments out of 50?
Well, um, we've, we're, the, the traffic infrastructure that's going in down there is, it, it will be built over time, and it, and it, whatever's required of that development when it goes forward, we do, we analyze it individually, and then collectively, as we issue building permits out there, they pay a fee to construct o, other improvements that were above and beyond required for the entire development. So it, it's a, it, it's incremental increase in the improvements, uh, but it'll go in there as traffic numbers increase. But each project has its own set of, um, mitigation measures to satisfy. We make sure their mitig, those mitigation measures are satisfied, um, project by project as they're approved, and they're conditioned to build them and they're required to build them. Uh, but you know, you, you don't, you may not get to ultimate four-lane roadway till later on when traffic warrants it. So it, it's, it's an incremental increase in the traffic improvements as they go, but each project that gets approved is required to mitigate for their impacts.
So if the market's hot and they push production, are we going to be chasing our tails on it, or is it something that we're prepared to keep the pace with?
Um, we're prepared to keep pace with the traffic, um, impacts from this project, certainly. Um, now keep in mind, as, as permits are issued, they pay, pay fee towards, you know, this project is a several, um, 50 or 60 mitigation measures related to traffic, and some of them they're, they're required to construct, some of them they're required to pay impact fees for their future construction. So as we collect, as we pull building permits, they pay towards those, those fees to pay for those improvements later on down the road. And that's how you generate the revenue to construct those improvements later on. And of course, some of the projects will be required to build them as part of their development, but over time, it incrementally increases, and you deal with the traffic as it goes, as development occurs.
Okay, so as I'm hearing, and that's a very good question, Roger, by the way, because that's one of the most asked questions we get in front of us.
Yes.
So as I'm hearing, that not only does each individual subdivision have their mitigation, they have their traffic plan, whatever, but as you reach a peak number, the fees are already collected upfront to be able to expand-
Correct.
-the rest of the, the backbone infrastructure, I guess that being the big word.
Correct.
And I think that's our, that's our concern, because obviously, we want to be ahead of it, never behind it, and we've done a really good job of usually staying ahead of it.
Right.
The message from the council is, we will be ahead of it.
Right. So for example, um, when we're talking about that, when you see this project next month, Mangini Ranch Phase Two, there, there's a number of thresholds in that project that require certain traffic improvements, you know, per phase. Like for example, one of the, one of the mitigation measures will be prior to the 250th permit in this subdivision, a traffic signal will be constructed at this intersection. So those are the kind of things that you'll see as mitigation measures for that project. But over time, before that 250 permits issued, where we expect an impact to be, um, have to be mitigated, um, it would, the developers require to construct that improvement to mitigate those impacts.
Okay.
I think it would be helpful-
I'm sorry, Roger. Go ahead. Finish your thought.
I was going to say, I think it'd be helpful if we just saw that as far as being able to present that to residents on what it might look like. We're showing houses, we're showing, you know, Mangini Ranch and everything, but one of the, like, like, uh, Nicholas said, one of the key questions I get is how are we going to mitigate traffic? It's already, it's already getting worse on East Bidwell and the north side of 50, so if we could show that and have that available for folks, I think it would be beneficial.
And, and actually, you make a really good point, Roger. Or actually, Roger, when I talk about this October-ish or whatever, so this is our first blush of doing these kind of updates, if you will. So we're not beating you up for anything, but we're trying to create what we're trying to put out in the community on a regular, consistent basis, and so between the five of us, that's, and you guys, of course, with the manager and stuff, that's why we're putting this together. That's a really good point, too, because that is the number one question. We get regular is traffic.
Right.
So you make a really good point. We know the history of it, so just another illustration slide, so.
Yeah, for example-
We're, we're creating as we go tonight.
Right. Okay, well, just one last thing on that. Um, like for, for Mangini Phase One, the project that's under construction right now, you know, they're required to do some improvements to East Bidwell Street, uh, along their front edge. They, they based a certain per, number of permits, they had to put in an additional lane on East Bidwell. Those are the kind of things we're seeing, that you'll see over time, uh, but they're, they're included with the project approvals when they come through before you for approval. You'll be able, and, and we've, we've required most, and most of the developers to provide, you know, graphic illustrations of what those impacts are and, and what those mitigation measures are, so you can see visually what they're going to construct to improve traffic with their project.
But that's wonderful, because I know their representatives are here. That's perfect, because then that, that allows them to also give us the same material to help you and us get out that information to the-
Sure.
-to the community. So I thank you, gentlemen and ladies that are in the audience for that, because I, I see most of them out there.
I, I think the other thing that's important for people to understand with regard to mitigation, because I think, I'm not, I think Roger was really asking a different question than what you answered. And I think the question that was being asked is what is going to happen on the north side of the freeway to deal with traffic that will be coming into the already developed parts of the city of Folsom, because 400 families moved in and they all have to go to the grocery store that doesn't exist down there yet.
Yes.
Um, so I think it's important that people understand that those transportation fees, as those projects move forward and the houses get sold, two of the things that those fees are going to be paying for are two more interchanges at Highway 50, at least for us to have some of the local match money, because we haven't identified the rest of that money yet, and, you know, the, the whole issue with Measure B not passing, that was what Folsom's big spend was going to be with that money. So I think we need for people to understand that those other two interchanges don't get done until this moves forward, and then as a segue into that, between you and, and our Public Works Director, um, now that Alder Creek Parkway's been built and Old Placerville's open again, when are we going to eliminate that U-turn coming out of, um, In-N-Out?
So, uh, part of those, um, improvements and mitigations, we're waiting for the, the remainder of the work to be done at Iron Point.
Mm-hmm.
Um, they're currently have K-rail along Iron Point to do the tie-in for the, the water line.
Okay.
As soon as that work's done, we're, we'll institute those mitigations, um, the U-turn, um, prohibition and some other signage along there.
Yeah, and I think we were, so we think that eliminating the U-turn is going to help the right turn from Iron Point toward the freeway.
Correct.
Like if, you know, because your other option is to go up, they go to Costco.
The eastbound right turn on South County.
Not going to have access out, we're not going to eliminate the U-turn prior to giving access to both sides of 50 out in the back of In-N-Out parking lot, right?
Correct.
Correct.
Well, you can already get there. You just have to go out.
Old Placerville.
Old Placerville, past Hampton Inn.
Yeah, but we got to get, make it easier, because folks aren't going to go all the way down, Old Placerville, down to Grant Line.
Well, they're not going to be making a U-turn. They can go further down East Bidwell and make a U-turn, but they're not going to be making one where they're doing it now.
We're talking north of the freeway at, uh, Iron Point or East Bidwell?
I'm saying that the, the purpose of the U-turn is to hit the freeway from, let's say you go to In-N-Out, you come around the U-turn, you come in, and it's impacted right now, but it's also impacted on the other side of, uh, Iron Point into East Bidwell.
Right, that's why we're eliminating that U-turn.
Eliminate it prior to giving access out of that parking lot to 50, it's going to be even worse.
Is that on one of the, the graphics you guys showed us, not last meeting, meeting before, that you're re, redirecting or reconstructing something, Old Placerville Road or something?
Talking about the Placerville Road to Alder Creek Parkway to-
They're going to be directed to-
-East Bidwell South.
Correct. So, so right now, the access coming from, um, In-N-Out, say, uh, they have two, two options. They can go out, uh, northbound Iron Point, or northbound East Bidwell, flip a U-turn to get on Highway 50. The other option is they can go south on Old Placerville Road, west on Alder Creek Parkway, back north on East Bidwell Street to the freeway.
Which is what they're going to have to do, which is what they're going to have to do, um, because that U-turn at Iron Point and East Bidwell is going away.
Correct.
So they can turn right and go up by Costco, make a U-turn up there, or they can go down another intersection, or they could actually just go down Iron Point and get on the freeway at Perry City.
Correct.
Okay, so that's that one. Um, and how, how are we doing on-
Future look?
Adding the other left turn lane at Clarksville, across from the college? Just up from the fire station?
Correct. Um, I'm, I don't know the status of that, but I can get back to you on that.
Yeah, and it's just, I don't, I'm not on that part of Clarksville very often. I happen to be on a Saturday afternoon before Christmas, and the traffic, middle of the day on a Saturday, trying to turn left was backed up way past the, um, the fire station.
Yeah, I think we-
So that's got to be a nightmare in the morning.
Yeah, and, and I think it's all tied together. We didn't want to start impacts out there and kind of unroll it all at once, uh, to see how that traffic, you know, starts to, to flow a little better out there-
Mm-hmm.
-before, you know, let, let them get done with Iron Point and remove the K-rail and, and institute our striping and-
Okay, but, but I, I'm not, Clarksville is so much further down-
Mm-hmm.
-on East Bidwell that maybe that's something that we could do sooner rather than later, because that's really just changing, um, a-
Through to, through left.
A through lane to a left turn lane.
There's some signal timing that needs to be adjusted out there, but-
Okay.
-we can certainly move forward on that.
And, and again, not that I'm out there very often, but I don't think I've ever seen anyone go across East Bidwell there.
Understood.
So.
Anything else for Stever or?
No, it was just, they were kind of connected to one another.
No, 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 I know they were. No, I don't disagree. Okay, Andy?
Yeah, just a couple of things that, a, a lot of my questions have been answered and maybe more of a comment, but, but I, I think you can feel the concern up here related to making sure all the infrastructure keeps up with the addition of residents and, and[1634.03] to making sure all the infrastructure keeps up with the addition of residents and, and businesses in that area. And something we haven't mentioned yet is, and that map's a good one to have up there right now, so in the bright green there, those are our future, really what I'll call developed park sites, I guess, and correct me if I'm wrong, Steve, but I think that's it.
Yes.
And then, and then the light blue or the baby blue colors, those are our future school sites, correct?
I believe yes.
So, um, now, are these, because I know we've talked recently with the school district folks and trying to iron out, I believe, final locations for the future high school and future middle school. Has that all been finalized yet? Okay. And does this depict, does this depict those final sites, then?
Oh, look, we have two school board members in the back of the room.
Well, I think Everett has a comment on that.
Yeah, so
So, the city manager has a comment on that.
Steve can answer the question. I'm not sure. Yes.
Okay. So, um, and, and the, the point to just these comments are, we do meet frequently with the school district folks, the, you know, city folks and the school district folks, and we're all very sensitive to the triggers that'll, you know, commence the construction
I can tell you that I do know that the develop, the landowners for Mangini Ranch have had ongoing discussions with the school district, and the school district's looking at trying to build, um, the first elementary school in, in Mangini Ranch, and that would be that blue, blue dot there next to the park site. And what we've heard from them is that they're trying to have that school in place and, uh, open by 2020.
Okay, that's, that's what I heard, and that's the information I want the public to hear, is that there will be a short period of time where those initial kids will be in existing schools north of the freeway, specifically just to the elementary school, but then
Until that time, they'll be bused probably to another location.
Which won't be a giant impact, but, but I think that's stuff the community wants to hear as far as making sure that we're keeping pace with things like that as well. My other question would be, um, so, so we talk about that school site. Is there, um, you know, when do we start have, you know, when do we develop enough impact fee accumulation from a park standpoint to start a park or two in these areas? Um, and, and, you know, I guess my question would be, is if that school site is being identified as probably, you know, the first school site, then, you know, would that adjoining park site be a candidate for the first, first park to get developed there? And, you know, where are we at on that as far as the city's plans to, to get that? Because I don't want, I don't think any of us here want a lot of money sitting in a bank while we could be developing these amenities for the residents that'll be moving in down there. So, I'd be
I couldn't really speak for when, when the, where those funds would be identified. It seemed like a logical location to use those. But, but what, what is important to note is that, uh, the revenue and the impact fees that they pay, that these building permits pay, will go towards constructing those improvements for the park site.
Right.
And so, um, it, it makes sense if that's where most of your activity is, that's where people are paying, uh, their impact fees. The develop, uh, home, home builders are paying for those fees, those, that money would be available. That seems logical to, to use that money at that location.
Right.
But I wouldn't wanna speak for the Parks and Rec Department on that, on their priorities
Well, Mr. Mayor, if I might, maybe, maybe I can answer, um, Councilmember Moran's questions a little bit. First, with regard to the school, I just wanna start there. It's important to, to know that, that while, um, students may initially be bused, it's not necessarily a byproduct of us lagging in terms of development. We've worked very closely with the school district on this, and there is a certain bulk of, of, of children that it takes to actually operate a, uh, an elementary school, right? So, you never open an elementary school for, for child number one. It takes a, a couple of hundred of them. So, we're, we are working in concert in that 2020 number, uh, and the initial busing of children is not a matter of not keeping up with infrastructure, it's just a matter of not having enough kids down there to open an elementary school.
Right, and that was my point.
And so, that's, that's the timing, so I just wanted to make sure that was clear. With regard to parks, um, we'll certainly be coming to you in the budget, uh, this year with our capital improvement plan that will start to reflect public facility infrastructure in this plan over the next, uh, CIP period. And in that process, we will start to explore certain financing mechanisms that might, uh, allow us to start construction of facilities down there, um, even, uh, prior to collecting all of the necessary fees. So, um, I mean, one method to do it is pay as you go, wait till you have all the money and, and start to build those facilities. Another is to use different, various types of bridge financing, and we're gonna be exploring those over the next couple of months through our budget. So, you'll see those in later, uh, presentations.
Great.
And I'm also pleased to see that, um, five of the locations, five of the school locations are immediately adjacent to park sites.
Yeah, it's funny you should mention that, and that's one comment I will make, is, is between the landowners and our two-by-twos, which was former councilmember Starsky and myself, we by design made sure most of those parks were next to the schools. So, getting back to Andy's comment, you know, w- we would probably be one of those five of us up here, depending on when to start, so who's gonna be up here, is gonna be looking to that park to go in about the same time as the school. And I know, as the manager said, there's a, there's a financial issue, certainly. We appreciate that. But the reason we designed these parks next to the schools is similar, and the best example I can give the community is Natoma Station as an example. We built Sheldon Park on purpose next to the station, the school right there, because it gives an expanded opportunity for both the school district and us for joint use of the facilities, the way they're designed and laid out. It also gives a better feel, in my opinion, so when the kids and the teachers and the administrators are outside on the yard of the school, it's a little easier for them to look at some nice green grass and trees and open space and not feel like they're in an institutional environment all day long. So, that was some of our by design. The school district, I, and I see to them back there, I really appreciate it because their, their candidness, if you will, uh, it was as much as ours that way, and fortunately, we're on the same page. So, I think that's where Andy's coming from, is as the developments get built up, especially ones that are immediately adjacent to and, and has an impact to a school, then our first want, wish and desire, unless future councils change their mind, is put the park in next to the school, if, if at all, to the extent possible at the same time.
Yes.
Yeah. Uh, and Mr. Mayor, if I might just add one more thing. Planning, uh, and the reason why some of these numbers seem like, um, we can't have surgical precision with regard to telling you exactly when a particular, uh, piece of, um, infrastructure will come online, is because over the course of decades, we have been estimating how quickly this project might be built out and how much it will cost to build it out. And some of our initial financing models were, were built, um, around absorption levels that we're not seeing now in today's housing market, right? Much, much higher levels of absorption in the housing market. So, um, given what, what, uh, Mr. Cron just explained to you with regard to what we're seeing likely absorbed in the next couple of years, that puts, um, you know, build out of this way past the 30-year horizon that we've talked about kind of loosely over the years. And so, um, it's, now that it's just now becoming real that we're talking about model homes, and we're talking about initial, um, tracks of homes that people will actually be moving into, we'll start to see what, you know, where really we are based on our estimates of how quickly these were gonna absorb based on what our current market realities are. And, and right now, um, you know, if we're, you know, if we're gonna absorb that entire block of 325 homes that'll be constructed in the next couple of years, that, that's, you know, starts to give us some data now that we can deal with, right?
Of course, economics plays a, a big role in that.
Yeah, absolutely. So, who, you know, it's, it's very hard to find anybody these days that can actually explain today's housing market in a way that can be understood, because I don't know that any of us have ever seen it before, right? So, so, but as we go through this process, you'll start to see, um, a presentation like this every three months or so, uh, and we'll start to talk about those milestones. Fortunately, these next couple after this one will also be happening during our budget preparation cycle, so you'll start to see all this financial and housing market information come together in a way that you can actually, uh, take some actions to synchronize these at least over this couple of year cycle here.
Good.
And I think it's important for people to remember that, um, at least Steve and I are aware of this, but it's taken us 20 years to get to this point, from when we first went to LAFCO and tried to get the sphere of influence. So, it's taken 20 years to get to this point, and we're probably gonna see some houses start construction this year, but we fully expect, and I'm sure it'll be cyclical, once again, it'll be years when there's a lot of permits pulled and years when there's not a lot of permits pulled, and it's anticipated to go 30 years. That makes it a 50-year project.
Do you think Roger had?
Yeah, I think the presentations are gonna be crucial, but I also feel like I, I'd like to see some attention, um, you know, put out to the public with this information and with the resource online, so they can see it as well, because that's, that's, I get a lot of questions, you know, pretty much every day now, because the, the ground's being graded and they're seeing trucks and people are freaking out. So, south of 50 has become kind of a boogeyman. So, if we had a resource where, you know, it's great that we're gonna see this stuff quarterly, but they need to see it too, residents need to be able to understand it and be kept up with the story, um, and just kept up to date. So, I mean, that's, I'd love to see that.
All right. Well, not to be, uh, a grumpy old man, but, uh, we don't charge a mission here, you know. This is open, open doors. We have an open door policy, so some of the people that want us to take it to their house on the couch, uh, welcome to come down here and talk to us anytime.
And this meeting is available online, and this information is available on Channel 14, so.
So, Steve, great presentation. Appreciate it very much.
Yes, thank you.
Like I said, this was the first blush of us trying to do all the stuff that we're, again, trying to let the public know. I mean, it's kinda like, Carrie made a good point. You look at Empire Ranch, Russell Ranch, way back when, to now.
I remember when there was still two golf courses planned.
Yeah, yeah. That, that is still not fully developed. That's gotta be 20 to 25 years at this point. So, to put it perspective for the community, we're still building a plan in its 24th, 25th year, which is Empire Ranch. So, this isn't happening overnight. It's, like I said, depends on absorption rates, economics and all that. This is easily a 30-plus-year plan, south of 50.
First entitlements for Russell Ranch was 1991.
Yeah, so you can see, it's, it's been around.
And when I was on the first, early on the, on the planning commission, so that would've been 1994, was when we decreased the density and eliminated the second golf course.
Yeah.
So.
So, thank you, Steve. Wonderful.
All right, thank you very much.
Appreciate it very much. And I know my colleagues and I, if we have things to add to the next presentation, we'll shoot a note to you.
That would be great.
But it's like Roger said, yeah.
And we'll cater it to your needs, so for the next one.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
And, uh, like I said, make it readily available.
Okay.
Thank you.
Give the clerk.
What's that? Steve, you said, said you're gonna provide, bless you. You'll provide copies to the five of us.
Yeah, you like, of the presentation?
Yeah, manager already says to take care of.
I'll get your copies.
Okay. So, the clerk, please call the next item.
Your next item is business from the floor, and you currently do not have any requests to speak.
Okay, business from the floor. Is any item not on the agenda? You get three minutes to kinda give us, uh, your thoughts and wishes. Don't have any written requests? Anybody want to do that? See none coming down? Move on to the next item, please.
Your next item is the consent calendar, noting that item 7A has been deleted.
I'll move consent.
I'm gonna, um, recuse from D, so if we could
Okay, I'm, I'll move everything but, I'll move everything but D.
And I'll second that.
Okay, so call a roll on items, uh, B through E with exclusion of D, and of course, A has been, already been deleted.
Councilmembers Gaylord?
Yes.
Howell?
Yes.
Moran?
Yes.
Sheldon?
Yes.
And Miklos.
Yes, item D.
So, I'll move item 7D.
I'll second. Just for, for the record, it's Resolution Number 10055, Resolution Authorizing City Manager to Execute An Agreement with HDR Engineering Incorporated for Design and Construction Administration Services for the Water Treatment Plant Polymer Reliability and Redundancy Project.
And I'm recusing, because HDR's a client of mine.
Okay, so, motion, second call, roll on that item, please.
Councilmember Gaylord?
Yes.
Moran?
Yes.
Sheldon?
Yes.
And Miklos.
Yes. Okay, next item, please.
Your next item is your first old business item tonight. This is item 8A, Resolution Number 10,060, a resolution authorizing an additional appropriation of funds for new freeway signs related to the renaming of Scott Road to East Bidwell Street.
Dave, I believe that's your item.
Uh, this is my item, yes. Um, so, before you tonight is a resolution, uh, seeking additional appropriation for the funding of the renaming of East Bidwell, or Scott Road to East Bidwell Street. Um, as you recall, back in March of, and April of last year, uh, this item was brought before you to seek the renaming. Um, part of that was an appropriation for the cost to replace and, um, remove some signs in the Caltrans right of way. Um, at that time, we had, uh, an initial estimate of approximately $50,000. Um, during the budget process, um, we got a semi-revised estimate, which increased, and we appropriated approximately $75,000 to the project, not for the cost of the, the, the project itself, but just to have a contingency. Um, in October of last year, we finally received a final estimate from Caltrans. Um, as we can expect, the, the estimate was higher. Um, they had missed an overhead freeway sign, um, they had missed replacing two off-ramp signs, and the estimate had climbed to approximately $66,000. Um, because, uh, I'm in construction, and we all know that construction can go awry sometimes if you don't have a contingency, um, we're seeking, um, a full 20% contingency to the project budget. Um, that will require an additional approximate $5,000 appropriation to get this through. Um, I'll be managing the, the work that Caltrans will be doing. I have spoken with their superintendent of maintenance, and we have a plan to bring it in at the $66,000, um, project initial budget, or final budget.
Okay, any questions of Public Works Director?
I'll move the item.
I'll second. Any discussion? If not, call a rolls, please.
Councilmember Gaylord?
Yes.
Howell?
No.
Moran?
Yes.
Sheldon?
Yes.
And Miklos.
Yes. Okay, next item, please.
Next item is your first public hearing tonight, item 9A. This is Resolution Number 10,040, a resolution, amending Resolution Number 9641 to adjust the initial Folsom Plan Area Development Impact Fees. This item was continued from the December 12 council meeting.
Mr. Jim Francis, our money man.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, as soon as I can bring this up. Actually, the next three items
Actually, yeah.
Are gonna be about what you were starting to talk about, which is, um, how we pay for, uh, public facilities and how the developers, uh, finance some of their improvements and, uh, on the other two. The first one is, um, uh, adjustments to the impact fees, uh, that you adopted, uh, earlier. Um, in fact, uh, in September of 2015, you adopted the initial fees, uh, impact fees, uh, for, uh, the public's, uh, facilities that will be in the south of 50. Now, that includes police, fire, library, municipal service facilities, um, the parks, the trail development, solid waste, equipment and, uh, uh, vehicles, the courtyard development, and various transportation and transit services. As you re, might recall, um, the development agreements and the code would allow for adjustments to those fees based on the land use changes that were, um, approved as of June 30th, 2016. It also allowed for inflationary adjustments every year and for periodic adjustments based on, uh, experience with construction costs. Now, these, again, I wanna mention, these are all specific to the Folsom Plan Area, the south of 50. These are not, uh, fees that are north of 50, um, development. Uh, just to point out, the total cost of, of these facilities initially was $264 million. Um, the adjusted fees that we're recommending is $273 million. And that's of a total, uh, just to give you, again, the perspective of the total of not only these facilities, but all the other infrastructure, the water, sewer, uh, fees and so on, is about $900 million at this point. So, this is just one part of that. Well, the next public hearing is on the, the rest of it. The fees were broken down by, um, use, uh, land use, and it was in, on both residential and non-residential land use. So, those are the different categories that were used to, um, allocate the fair share of every, uh, development's, uh, responsibility in, in funding these services. Uh, I took just the single-family, uh, fees, as you can see, the, under residential, the single-family category. Again, there are fees in each of those categories, which were in the report, but I took just those to show you the difference. And municipal facilities, uh, the adjusted fee actually went down, uh, and the reason, it's a little surprising that it would go down, uh, but the reason for that was, um, uh, first of all, when we added the, uh, land use changes, we found that there were more residences. So, there were more residents, same cost, uh, so the costs went down. We then applied the inflationary factor, that brought it back up a little bit, but then, when we looked at actual construction, we used the, um, uh, the estimates, for instance, on the fire station that we have on 39, and, uh, we plugged those in. Those were lower than what we had anticipated initially. Uh, also, our municipal service building, we had some engineering cost estimates of that. That was lower. And so, we had a number of things that went down, which is why it results in, in a, uh, adjustment downward on that. Uh, solid waste, the courtyard and the transit services all went up roughly, um, because of the cost of, uh, inflation over that time. And then, uh, again, I, well, I wanna go back and point out that the municipal service, or municipal facilities, and again, that's the police, fire stations and all of that, and it includes the parks and trails development, because you started to talk about that. If you recall, what we did is we didn't make those standalone fees for each of those areas. We grouped them as one fee, and the reason for that was, we didn't know what the sequence would be, but we could use that money for any of those purposes. It gave us more flexibility in the funding, so that if you wanted to park at a certain point, uh, we would have the money as a totality, whereas you wouldn't have it if you separated it into individual, uh, fee schedules. Uh, the, these are standal, these are standalone, the Highway 50 improvements, uh, Highway 50 interchange, and you were talking about both of those. These are fees that we will gather for, for those kinds of, um, developments throughout the project, and then we have the Sack County Transportation Development Fee, which they are oblig, the developers are obligated to pay that through this mechanism. So, with that, uh, again, the fees on, the impact fees are up about 3% on the adjustment overall, and we would recommend, uh, the council, after a public hearing consideration, adopt that Resolution 10,040.
Okay, this is a public hearing. Um, anyone wishing to come forward on the public hearing item, can do so at this time. Do we have any written requests?
You have no requests to speak.
So, again, the public hearing is now officially open. If you wanna talk on this item, please come forward. See nobody galloping down the aisleways, so we'll go ahead and close the, the public hearing. Any questions or discussion?
Jim, I have a question. It came up the other day when I had a discussion with the, um, park director and the chairman, and I guess I was wrong, but maybe I wasn't. The impact fee for the parks, did I not hear you say that would be combined with fire, police and so forth, so that
Yes.
Okay. So, there's nothing that prohibits that fee from being incorporated, is that correct? We're in the impression that that might not be true. correct? We're in the impression that that might not be true, that you can do...
Would prohibit it from...
Being combined and used as a IOU type, you know, credit back.
Yeah, that's correct. So what we would do is we would, that fee is about $11,000, if I remember, per unit, but you would get the money for all the other facilities at the same time, so you'd have one pot of money. Now, you're going to monitor that over time so that you have the appropriate total amount that's spent, but you wouldn't have to wait by having it as an individual standalone fee till you had enough money to, for instance, build the park. You would have the money a lot sooner, and that's what we had, there are certain services you're going to have down there sooner than others, and we had planned for that in the financing plan.
That's the way I understood the first discussion, but the question that was put in my mind after the discussion I have with those individuals was if you collected the first 300 homes, and your priority decided by the council, that is, they say, prestation or fire station, okay, neither one of those, or even the parks would have enough money at that time, standalone, you can take that park money and apply it to build a fire station?
Yes, that's correct.
There's no problem with that?
No.
Okay.
The way the fee was adopted was, we had itemized the cost of those various items, but the fee was adopted as one...
Municipal service.
One fee for municipal services, right. So, and for instance, the parks, which happened to be the biggest, that's about $76 million, but that would be monitored over time, because by the time you build all the parks that you saw up on that other map, that was the estimated cost.
I think the only concern with park people would be the timing and the impact, okay, because a kid's going to want to park, a family's going to want to park, the society's going to want to park, okay?
Yeah.
And if we give it away on the left side, and then we find out the impact now, we need to park, we may not have enough to do it, and so I'm not agreeing about the idea, because I realize when we voted that way, what we were doing. But I just want to be sure that we all understand the same way, because if we programmed to build a park thinking we're going to have 300 times $8,000, and we're not, the possibility we're not, then we have to understand that.
Right.
I just have one question.
Yeah?
I'm not sure if this is for Jim or Dave. The construction cost index, is that the ENR number?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
And then, I just have a quick question. So now that it's been explained, we should have houses being built down there, is this an exercise we'll go through annually then, now that we actually have stuff going on as far as these CPI adjustments or whatever?
The CPI adjustments, according to the ordinance I can do as the finance director, and it wouldn't have to come...
Oh, okay, okay.
To the council.
So this was...
We want to, if we want to adjust it for other than that, it would come to the council.
Got it, got it. Thanks for that clarification.
Okay. Any further questions? Otherwise, a motion is in order.
I'll move the item.
I'll second it.
Okay, you got a motion, a second, please call a roll.
Councilmember Gaylord.
Yes.
Howell.
Yes.
Moran.
Yes.
Sheldon.
Yes.
And Miklos.
Yes. Call the next item, please.
Your next public hearing item is 9B, Resolution Number 10,059, a resolution adopting the Nexus Study fiscal year 1718 update for the Folsom Plan Area Specific Plan Infrastructure Fees and to set the updated amount of infrastructure fees.
While you're here, Jim, why don't you take that one, too?
Okay, I will. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is going to look a lot similar to the one you just saw. The Folsom Plan Area Specific Plan Infrastructure Fees, SPIF for short, are the fees collected that allow us to equitably spread the cost burden among the developers. So, for instance, if I'm the first developer, and I have to, you saw the infrastructure, if I have to put in that sewer line that's going to serve all of south of 50, or the water line, now, I've got to put it in, I've got to finance it, but my fair share may only be 10% of that, in terms of what I'm actually building. So what these fees do are, they're collected from the other developers, go in, and then I would have a credit to that fund, to get reimbursed from that fund for anything in excess of my fair share of it. So these are fees that developers pay, it's split back among the developers for that infrastructure cost, so that it's equitably shared among all of the developers. Again, these fees were initially the Nexus Study, and these fees were initially approved in September 2015. They're, again, for purposes of spreading the cost burden among the various developers. It's for sewer, water, storm drainage, roadway improvements, and habitat mitigation. Again, the development agreements allow for adjustments through the land use changes of June 30 of 16. They allow inflationary adjustments each year and periodic adjustments based on acquisition or construction of facilities. The fees were broken down in the same way as the impact fees between residential and non-residential. Now, these fees were adjusted primarily about 20, they're about 20 to 30% increases on the adjustments, and that's based on a refinement of the engineering that went into, and the actual costs that they've had down there already. So these are up about 20 to 30%. So this is the initial fee that was adopted by you. By the categories, that first one, single-family, large density, or low-density, I'm sorry, went from 31,684 to 37,582, and that's per unit. And then you can see the rest of the residential fees, how they all went up. The same is true on the non-residential fees, these are on a building square footage basis. Again, they all went up roughly 20 to 30%. And unless there's questions, after your public hearing, we recommend approval of Resolution 10,059.
Okay, any questions, Jim, before we open the public hearing? Okay, we'll go ahead and open officially the public hearing for this item. Anybody wishing to come forward, please do so. I don't believe we have any written requests.
You have none.
Okay, one more opportunity if you want to speak on this item. Seeing none, go ahead and close the public hearing.
I'll move the item.
A motion, do I have a second? I have a second from Vice Mayor Sheldon, call the roll, please.
Councilmember Gaylord.
Yes.
Howell.
Yes.
Moran.
Yes.
Sheldon.
Yes.
And Miklos.
Yes. Okay, next item, please.
Your next item is new business item 10A. This is City of Folsom, CFD Number 21, White Rock Springs Ranch. It's Resolution Number 10,056. This is a resolution appointing consultants approving a proposed boundary map and declaring attention to form a CFD to be named City of Folsom Community Facilities District Number 21, White Rock Springs Ranch, and to levy special taxes thereon. And Resolution Number 10,057, a reso declaring the necessity for incurring bonded indebtedness in and for the City of Folsom, CFD Number 21, White Rock Springs Ranch, and calling for a public hearing thereon.
I'm changing the name.
Do that.
No, I'm changing the name to White Rock Wings Ranch.
Mr. Francis, please.
You know we were going to do that. Jim, one more item.
We all had bets on where she went.
I think she passed.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, this is a request to form CFD Number 21. You've been through a number of these so far for south of 50. Again, these are ways that the developers will finance the infrastructure that they're doing down there, and in this particular one, Greg Ranch Recovery Acquisition requested this proposed forming of the CFD, and we're doing it in, subject to the Mellow Roos Acts and our policies regarding Mellow Roos. The area is on Plasterville Road and White Rock Road, and I don't have to say that five times, so I'm safe. It's a boundary, you're being asked to approve that boundary, and it has two parcels in it, as you can see back on the original, there's a parcel up in the left-hand corner, and then the larger parcel. This development will include 136 single-family units and 287 high-density, single-family residential units. Again, it provides funding for the backbone infrastructure facilities and related environmental mitigation. The facilities include water, wastewater, drainage, transportation. It does not provide any specific maintenance service in this CFD. It will be leveled, levied through 2067 and 2068 at your discretion. There will be an annual increase to the fees at 2%. The maximum range would be 2,600 on a high-density, single-family unit and 2,900 on a low-density, single-family home, and the limit on the bonded indebtedness of this CFD would be 55 million. You have a policy that the tax burden will not, property tax limit will not exceed 2%. It does not, in this case, it comes in at 1.88%. Again, it's extended term out to 67, 68. There'll be bond proceeds or pay-as-you-go revenue. The maximum tax will be levied based on them pulling a building permit. The pay-go is for the developer's use in the first 20 years and the city's use thereafter, if required. The council retains after the debt service is paid and at your sole discretion, the ability to extend, discontinue, or reduce the maximum special tax for this CFD. And this action will approve the intention to form it, approve the boundary map, the rate and method of apportionment, approve the consultants that we use, and that's Resolution 10,056. It also will declare the necessity for incurring bonded indebtedness and call for a public hearing before adoption of this. That's 10,057.
Okay, any questions of Jim on this item? Okay, I'll go ahead and move Resolution 10, 156.
Second.
Call a roll, please.
Councilmembers Gaylord.
Yes.
Howell.
Yes.
Moran.
Yes.
Sheldon.
Yes.
And Miklos.
Yes. And then Resolution Number 1,0057, I'll go ahead and move.
Second.
I think I heard Roger first, you guys are quick. Go ahead and call a roll, please.
Councilmembers Gaylord.
Yes.
Howell.
Yes.
Moran.
Yes.
Sheldon.
Yes.
And Miklos.
Yes. Okay, call the next item, please, on the new business.
Your next item is 10B. This is ordinance Number 1280, an ordinance of the City of Folsom adding Chapter 2.46 to the Folsom Municipal Code relating to electronic and paperless filing of Fair Political Practices Commission campaign disclosure statements.
So this is an item going to be actually read off and provided to the city council by our city clerk. This is her item, so with that, Krista.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, Krista Fremantle, your city clerk. The item before you tonight is first reading of a proposed ordinance that would require that campaign disclosure statements be filed electronically. As a short background, the Political Reform Act requires that council members, candidates, and political committees file campaign disclosure statements with their local filing officer, and for Folsom, that's the city clerk. These legally required statements contain information describing the financial activity related to that particular council member, candidate, or committee. Currently, the city clerk's department receives campaign disclosure statements in paper format, and we are proposing the transition to all electronic filing. As part of an ongoing trend towards electronic filing, the state legislature in 2012 granted local agencies with the authority to require electronic filing, provided that they first adopted an ordinance that met certain criteria set forth within state law. The ordinance before you tonight does meet all of that criteria. So why this transition to only electronic filing? We believe that the primary benefit of electronic filing is greatly enhanced transparency to the public for the information contained within these documents. Documents filed electronically are instantly available online. The other main benefits is that the statements filed electronically are searchable by the online users. The software has a robust search feature where you can search not only for filings by a specific candidate, office holder, or committee, but you can filter using very specific search criteria such as contributor names, payee names, payments within a certain timeframe. So it really enhances the accessibility of this information to the general public. A few other benefits just worth mentioning. For the actual filers, the software does make it easier because it acts like treasurer's accounting software, where transactions can be entered at any time, and then when the filings are due, those payments or contributions are assembled all into the current, correct schedule. It's somewhat of an intuitive system, so rather than filling out each schedule, it's transaction-based, and the software recognizes that when you enter a certain contribution, that then needs to be added to a specific schedule. So the other benefit to the filers is fields that are required to be entered, you can't continue until that information is entered. So it helps to really avoid, you know, accidental errors of omission where the filer might not include information that's actually required. So, in closing, we believe that the electronic filing will serve as an important improvement to the transparency of these financially-related documents. Staff is recommending that the city council conduct first reading of the ordinance, and we are here to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, first comment, I think that's really, really important. First of all, I want to thank Krista for always being in front of everything when it comes to anything that has to do with filings, and I don't know how you keep all this stuff straight, but anyway. But I think a really, really key point that was made here from the very beginning, this has been an informational opportunity since 1974, to always look at anybody's paperwork of whether you're an office holder, running for something, even some senior staff members are required to do some of this stuff. What this does, it just takes it finally to that next step to make it even that much easier. You know, right now, you can still find it, you know, it's all available here and through the county, but this just makes it that much easier to do. And so I want to congratulate Krista for looking into this, going through all the modules, knowing what she has to do to keep up on the paperwork, knowing how she has to rein in not only the five of us, but some senior staff, but all the other committees and commissions and stuff that she has to manage. So I congratulate you on doing that. I know it's going to make all of us a lot easier to do what we have to do. I think it's going to make it easier and more efficient within the city hall, and the most important thing it's going to do is make it easy for the public to track or trace and look and do whatever they need to do to make sure and feel comfortable that everybody's doing everything they're supposed to be doing. So, thank you again, you're always ahead of everything, and I just want to make sure the public knew that. She's second to none up here, guys, so congratulations. I'll move the item.
Second.
Any further discussion on that one?
You know, just a quick question. So Krista, to set this up, was this software that handles this as far as the online entering and also the searchable from anyone, is that something we had to purchase, or was that freely available through the, nothing's free, right?
Well, free things aren't good.
Yes.
Good things aren't free.
Right, right.
So this was part of the city clerk's budget proposal for this fiscal year.
Okay, great, great. No, great improvement.
So we have a motion, a second, any other further discussions or anything? Okay, call a roll, please.
Councilmembers Gaylord.
Yes.
Howell.
Yes.
Moran.
Yes.
Sheldon.
Yes.
And Miklos.
Yes. Okay, next item.
Okay, your next item tonight takes us to the Joint City Council Successor Agency, PFA, Folsom South of 50 Parking Authority, and the Folsom Ranch Financing Authority Meeting.
Okay, so I think we need to call a roll to establish that form, please.
So we will call the roll as Councilmember Gaylord.
Here.
Howell.
Here.
Moran.
Present.
Sheldon.
Here.
And Miklos.
Present. Okay, the next item?
The first item, the only item on this portion of the agenda, is your consent calendar.
I'll move consent.
Okay, I have a motion by Councilmember Howell, seconded by Councilmember Gaylord. Call a roll, please.
Councilmembers Gaylord.
Yes.
Howell.
Yes.
Moran.
Aye.
Sheldon.
Yes.
And Miklos.
Aye. And we'll go ahead and adjourn the joint, excuse me, the Joint City Council Successor Agency Public Finance Authority, Folsom South of 50 Parking Authority, Folsom Ranch Financing Authority meeting, and reconvene the Folsom City Council. Next item.
Thank you. That takes us to city manager reports.
Thank you, and good evening, everyone. Just a few things, tonight is infrastructure night, so just to mention a couple of things that are going on here around town. There'll be nighttime Bridge Lane closures next week on Rainbow Bridge from 9:00 PM to 5:30 AM. Traffic will be just limited to one lane, and flaggers will be available to direct traffic. We're doing some work... There'll be nighttime Bridge Lane closures next week on Rainbow Bridge from 9:00 PM to 5:30 AM. Traffic will be just limited to one lane, and flaggers will be available to direct traffic. We're doing some work underneath the bridge, and at this point, we have to remove some bat exclusion devices that were placed underneath the bridge to limit environmental issues with regard to our bat population here in Folsom. So apologize for the inconvenience, but we'll try and keep it to a minimum and keep it over the late night. Also, you may see some helicopters flying about town. PG&E is doing some re-conductoring work on some of their major transmission lines in and about town on their big towers, and so if you see low-flying helicopters, they're likely a result of the work that PG&E is doing in the area of East Bidwell, Scholarway, Empire Ranch Road, Broadstone Parkway, and that particular area around the college. And lastly, just to talk a little bit about the fires that we've recently experienced in Northern and Southern California, these very, very large conflagrations that have been very impactful on the communities, and we certainly know, we had some of our professional public safety crews, both police and fire, responding to these various incidents. But more than that, members of these communities that have been trained to deal with these things, like their various volunteer groups, the Red Cross, and certainly their CERT groups, were key in helping communities deal with the tragedy that existed during and after these, these major events. We also are prepared for these events with our various different volunteer and professional opportunities, and there's a great opportunity for the community to be part of preparations for and dealing with any disaster should we be similarly afflicted, and that's our Community Emergency Response Team. Some of you may have heard me talk about our CERT program before. It's a fantastic volunteer program where people can be educated about the community, about emergency preparedness, and be given the training and the tools with which to respond in the time of crisis. And our next CERT training class begins in March this year, in 2018, and so you can visit our website and search for CERT, and you can get additional information on signing up for our CERT program and being part of that great effort to be called upon should we ever need you in the time of an emergency. Additionally, the council will recall, back in September, just because numerically it made a lot of sense, the council passed Resolution 10,000 honoring January 13th, this coming Saturday, as Johnny Cash Day in the City of Folsom, and that marks the 50th anniversary of Johnny Cash's famous concert in Folsom Prison that put the prison and perhaps even Folsom on the map in 1968. Not that we weren't on the map before, but it certainly brought a bit of notoriety to the community that we hadn't had previously. So this Saturday, January 13th, is Johnny Cash Day in the City of Folsom, and so go out and pop a Johnny Cash CD in your CD player, if you still have one, and whoop it up a little bit, so, yeah.
Okay.
That is all, sir.
Okay, we'll do council comments. We'll actually start with the, Mr. Moran down there.
Well, thank you, Mayor. Yeah, just a couple of things. First of all, Happy New Year to everyone, and hope everyone has a great 2018. And the only thing I'll say that was something that occurred beyond our last council meeting was Folsom High School Football's state championship victory there, which was especially neat. Their first two championship, state championships were actually played down in Southern California. So this was one that was much easier for the local folks to get to at Sac State. So congratulations to Chris Richardson and all the coaches and certainly the players, the parents and the fans who made that happen. But again, as the mayor commented in the Telegraph, three state championships in, you know, that short a time period is exceptional. So congratulations to those folks, and I understand there will be some celebrations that are being worked on, and we'll make sure the community is well aware of those as they come along. But with that, I will say good evening.
Carrie.
Sorry, Dave, I've been picking on you all night. I got a complaint from a resident, and I've actually noticed this myself recently. We've got a bunch of potholes, I know. The middle of a rainstorm is not the time to bring that up, but they're along Greenback. And, you know, honestly, to the people that are complaining, one of whom happens to be sitting in the room tonight, he shall remain nameless. These things are actually exacerbated by these heavy rainstorms. So I know tomorrow's probably not going to be a good day for asphalt, but when we have some asphalt moving, or even if we could pull some off a south of the freeway.
We actually have good pothole repair mix that works in the rain, so we'll probably be out as soon as it lightens up a little bit.
Okay, good. Happy New Year to everybody. I may have a little bit of sad news since our last council meeting. Unfortunately, Folsom lost a great volunteer in Dennis Brockt, longtime CAPS volunteer who passed away just before Christmas. So Dennis had been sick for quite a while, so my thoughts and prayers are with the family.
Wow, I hadn't heard that. Roger?
Actually, just wanted to show my appreciation to Folsom PD as today is National Law Enforcement Appreciation Day, so if everyone can give him a round of applause, and thank you so much. That, that's all I got.
Yeah, appreciate it. Vice Mayor?
He stayed out of trouble, and also helped you out. You know, he's pretty young, you've got to keep an eye on him. I want to just echo what Andy said, the, I was at two of the state championships and watched the third one, or the second one on the TV. It's a tremendous aspect for this town. I mean, that stadium was packed. And what really was amazing, there's a lot of people that didn't belong to Folsom that came to see and sat on our side of the stadium. So I'm looking forward to the parade that Mary's going to probably talk about, and the staff is going to, both staffs, school and the city, put together, which would be great. So, and another thing I want to comment, and I did go to revert back to my younger days, and went and saw the Motown presentation over the weekend in the Harris Center. It's just great to have that available, you know. And the level of that particular performance was so high. It's amazing that Folsom can get, attract that type of performances, and they've got more coming. And that same thing with our, the Folsom Symphony. It's a great honor to have that in this town, you know. So I wish everybody, I think 2018's going to be one heck of a year, and I'm looking forward to getting to the end of it and going beyond. So I just wish everybody the best of 2018.
Okay, thank you. A bit of quick business, I failed to do in December, my report out on my ACAPS symposium on this, just before the December 12 city council meeting. In fact, I see Lieutenant Browning in the audience there, he assisted me. Also, the Chair of the Planning Commission, Mr. Jackson, was down there. This symposium was all about Prop 64 and the effects it was going to have on the state of California, and we were, ACAPS was the Association of California Cities aligned with public safety, to which I'm currently the vice president. We hosted this one, and we had probably close to 70 people there, of which most of it was law enforcement, I would say. And really, the thing that we kind of took out of there was, they still don't know, they, the state, still really don't know what's going to happen, how it's going to happen. In fact, one comment was made from a state official to one of the police chiefs that was present. "We built an airplane, but if it goes down the runway, we're not sure if the wings will fall off." I think that was pretty accurate. And so we participated. It was also remarkable to hear that there's not a lot of cities and/or counties that have jumped into this and have embraced selling recreational marijuana because of all the impacts, the federal laws, and so on and so forth. So despite what you may be hearing in the media, this is not the big robust, you know, let's quick, let's open these things up, because most of the cities and counties up and down the state, more than 50% of them, I think it was like 62%, I heard a number, are saying, actually, no, Folsom being one of them. But I want to also do a special shout-out to Lieutenant Browning. I know the chief, I spoke to you earlier, as well as the manager. We have another jewel, as we do all of PD, in my opinion, in Mr. Browning. He has been with me on many of these ACAP symposiums and conferences and whatnot, and every time we walk out of there, I have the other elected officials come up to me and say, "How do we get that guy in my department?" I said, "Hands off." Jason brings a level of expertise that these folks are never really exposed to, in my opinion, and Jason actually helped us craft the title and language for a bill that we're co-sponsoring with a state senator and assembly member that's working its way through the House, both Houses down there. And I want to do a special shout-out to Jason because we did adopt the name you came up with, we did adopt the process that you suggested, and that's the bill the way it's been written. So congratulations, I'd like to give you a round of applause for that. Thank you, Chief, for allowing me the opportunity to take him with us, because Folsom's very fortunate to have him and assisting me with things we do to be able to promote and protect what we do in this community, not only from what you do on the streets, but from like the facility next door, as an example.
So what's the name of the bill?
The Jason Browning Bill.
Yes, the Jason Browning Bill. It has to do with gang violence and gang prevention and gang intervention, and what was the last one?
Oh, so it's Jason's gang?
Yeah, essentially, James Gang, but we'll call it Jason. Anyway, so thank you, I appreciate that. I had the honor and pleasure of presenting two Eagle Scout Awards on Sunday. Congratulations, Gautam Pradip, and I apologize again that his names are difficult, and Rohan Niger. Two exceptional young men, I think all the Eagles are exceptional. These two were just enthusiastic lecturers, and they're juniors, they both did their Eagles in five and a half years, which is a very accelerated pace. They had more badges, I don't even, on their lapels, I don't even know how they could stand, they had so many badges. And one of them's already earned their first badge as an Eagle. There's three, you can, three palms you can earn, he's already earned the first one. Too bad Scott's not here, because he knows exactly what I'm talking about, he had the bronze palm. So you actually, after you become an Eagle, there's three more achievements as an Eagle you can get, and he's already got the first one, and he's still a junior in high school. So congratulations to those two. January 23rd, and thank you to my school board members and your superintendent for allowing us, as a city, to recognize the football team. So the state champion football team will be here at the city council meeting on January 23rd, and we're going to do a nice introduction to the community and put them on TV and say thank you for their performance and their hard work. We have a few other surprises that the manager and I have been talking about. And then January 30th, Elaine, if you want to touch a little bit about the parade, I know we got the memo of the city council members, so I'd like you to introduce it to the community.
So on January 30th at 7:00 PM will be a-
Is her mic on?
No. So January 30th at 7:00 PM, we will have a special parade honoring the Folsom High School Football Championship-
Team. There we go. And so it will start on Coloma Road and then continue down Sutter Street and conclude with a rally at the Amphitheater in the Historic District, so it'll be really exciting.
So it's January 30th, starts at 7:00 PM?
At 7:00 PM, yes.
And we'll, of course, we'll re-announce it as we go along, so we just want to give you a heads-up. And again, I want to thank all the cooperation of the school district, superintendent was, as well as the board to all come up with a date. And I'll tell you, without hesitation, the superintendent, and from what we got back from her, and the board are just enthusiastic as we are to present another achievement that Folsom is very, very, very proud of, so. And Elaine, thank you for all the work and coordinating this thing.
Of course.
So my colleagues, I hope that you can all join us that day, it's a special presentation. So with that, I have nothing further than a Happy New Year. I hope everyone had a great holiday, and we'll see you on the 23rd, meeting adjourned at 13.